If you'll stand and join me in the end of indication and immediately following, we'll do the flag salute. Dear Lord, we thank you that we get to gather here today together to make decisions for our beautiful city. We'd like to ask you to look over our students and the staff as school ends in Kingsburg this week and as we have graduations and promotions the next two nights with extreme heat. We'd also like to ask extra protection for our firefighters locally and countywide that are fighting fires up in our foothills. Please give us guidance through the decisions that we make tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I will call the Kingsburg City Council Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please do real call?
House Member for title?
Here.
House Member for power?
Here.
And Mayor North?
Here.
And Councilmember Roman is an excusing absence tonight.
Thank you. Item number two is public comment. Let me go back, I forgot to say, personally went to executive order N 2920 issued by Governor Gavin Newsom. The council chambers will be at 50% capacity, including the city council members and staff. Public will have the opportunity to call at 1-425-436-6335, passcode 5290024, to provide comments on agenda items. Item number two, public comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. We will start within the council chambers first, and then we will move to the phone if anybody is on the phone. Do we have anybody that would like to? We usually start in the back and then move forward. If anybody would like to make a public comment, you can come up and state your name and your address, or if you're a resident.
Sorry, everyone. All right. My name is Joseph Stevens. I'm not a resident of Kingsburg, but I still wanted to come before you and make a comment this evening, if that's okay. So, as I said, my name's Joseph Stevens. After hearing the discourse that came in response to Representative Hurtado's proposal to fly the Pride Flag Initiative Proclamation in Recognition of Pride Month at the last city council meeting, I thought I was inclined to come to speak to you guys. So as an active ally to LGBTQ+ community, I think it's important to understand the effects of underrepresenting marginalized voices without taking a moment to recognize that we include and accept the LGBTQ+ members of our community. Without doing that, we perpetuate cycles of exclusion, victimization, and discrimination. LGBTQ+ discrimination is associated with a range of mental health problems, including higher rates of depressive symptoms, suicidality, and substance use than their heterosexual peers. These problems are magnified for adolescents who identify as racial/ethnic minorities. I have, I do have some statistics I can provide you guys with, or some sources I can provide you guys with on where I'm reading this from. But high rates of victimization and fear and violence in school is associated with suicidal ideation, suicide planning, and suicide attempts. Homophobic victimization is associated with academic concerns and at-risk behaviors for LGBTQ youth. It negatively impacts school belongingness. Youth who experience homophobic victimization are more likely to skip school, have poor academic performance, and view graduating as less important. LGBTQ+ youth face higher rates of bullying, threats of injury with a weapon on school property, and forced sexual intercourse. Additionally, LGBTQ+ youth are more likely to experience polyvictimization, which is 15 or more experiences of victimization throughout their lifetime, with high rates of physical violence, sexual violence, dating violence, child maltreatment, and property damage compared to their heterosexual peers. They are as much a part of this community as anyone. Their health matters. Taking steps to improve the LGBTQ mental and physical health trajectories and education outcomes will do nothing but benefit the community as a whole. In addition, in addition to mental health and educational outcomes, it also ties directly into Swedish heritage. Sweden is actually one of the countries with the longest-standing histories of LGBTQ+ support. They were, they decriminalized same-sex relationships 11 years before the United States in 1944. In 1972, they became the first country to formally recognize and legalize gender recognition, allowing citizens to be assigned a new gender and providing free gender reassignment surgery or treatment. In 2003, same-sex couples were given the right to adopt in Sweden. In the U.S., we did not have that privilege in all 50 states until 2016. And in 2020, Sweden was named the most LGBTQ-friendly country in a travel magazine, and that is because of their anti-discrimination laws and their long history of support for the community. So with all of that being said, and with it being in recognition of Pride Month, which began today, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy pride.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we were starting at the back. Did you also want to come forward? No? Okay, so we will start at the next row. So that one will be where Michael and Tamara are, so whichever one of you wants to come forward. Hi, Tamara.
Hi, good evening. Excuse my heavy panting, I ran. Little late after work. My name is Tamara Norris. I'm a resident of Kingsburg. Also forgot the wrong glasses, sorry. I, in recognition of Pride Month, I thought that I would give just a little brief overview of some really wonderful information that I found regarding the RFSU, which is the Swedish Association for Sexual Enlightenment. It's a national group in Sweden. The organization, RFSU, is nonpartisan and nonreligious. It's based on the conviction of the central role of sexuality and cohabitation for the individual and the society. They have a wonderful, wonderful program regarding sex education. Education is compulsory in schools and has been since 1955. There's hardly any opposition to sexuality education in Sweden. Sexuality education should support and prepare young people for leading a responsible sexual life. It should enable each and every individual to work towards leaning how she or he wants to live and towards discovering what is right or wrong for them. Guiding stars for the group are knowledge instead of ignorance, openness and facts instead of mysteries, acceptance of young people's sexuality, relationships, and love with or without a partner. Sexuality education in Sweden conveys facts about sexual reproductive health such as anatomy, sexual functions, orientations, STIs, AIDS, HIV, abortion, and contraceptives. Facts are important, but they're not enough to the people of Sweden. The possibility to discuss, reflect, and work on attitudes, norms, and values regarding, for example, the use of condoms, gender, harassment, and expressing of love is also very, very important to them. Different methods and values clarify groups, clarifying groups are used in education in every school. Education starts as young as the elementary level in Sweden. I thought this was a particularly wonderful topic, given the conversation at the last meeting. I thought it might be particularly interesting as well, Mayor North, considering you are a principal of a school now, as well as you are principal of Rafer Johnson, and I know that you have laid down for a number of LGBT students and young people in our community and stood up for them on bullying and harassment. In fact, as many as there are, I could actually name one for you tonight if you needed it. So I wonder, there's so much more, like there's pages, I mean, but I don't, I only have five minutes though, so I'll grace your presence next time. But I wonder, with the decision that the council made last, last meeting, and with new information coming out, and with the groups that are forming, I wonder if the council would feel just as comfortable providing the same answer and decision you gave our local community as you would in our sister city in Sweden soon.
Thank you. Michael, did you want to come up next, or?
I'm here.
Okay. So if we have no one else in the chamber that would like to put, to make a public comment, we will go to the phones. Is there anyone on the line that would like to make a public comment that is not on our agenda tonight?
Yes.
Can you please state your name and if you are a resident of Kingsburg or not?
My name is Brenda Prado, and I am a resident of Kingsburg.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes.
I'm calling in regarding the policies that Kingsburg has regarding animal control and throw-in all the organizations that are not being followed due to several recent events with people's animals and the disposition that's happening to them.
Hello?
Yes.
Do you want to speak with me, ask for people who've done? Go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, Brenda. Brenda's giving public comment right now. Go ahead, Brenda.
Do I start over, or do you already hear what it says?
You can continue, I paused your time, so if you want to keep talking, I'll start your timer.
Okay. The reason I'm calling is because I'd like to, in the very near future, either get something put on the agenda regarding the policies and procedures that we have for lost town animals in Kingsburg in regards to Fresno County Sheriff's Department of Defense giving out incorrect information to citizens and follow through not being done. There's been several instances, like I said, that are unsuccessful to me and to many others. And I just wanted to come on here and say that I'd like something added to the agenda so this problem can be addressed before it happens to another family. So if we can work on that sometime within the next week or so, I appreciate it because our town needs to be better than what they've been doing so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Do we have anyone else on the line for public comment? Hearing none, we will close public comment. Item number three is to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is presentations, and we have none listed. Item five is consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on the consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each listed item. Tonight, we have 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5. I would like to pull 5.4. Does anyone else have something that they would like to pull?
I do not.
Okay. So I'll need a motion for, for approving 5.1, 2, 3, and 5.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item 5.4, I have a personal conflict with, so I need to recuse myself.
Mayor North, you accused yourself of 5.4. Is there any discussion, anybody want to discuss anything on 5.4?
I have nothing.
Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve 5.4?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion approved. I mean, all in favor, yeah?
Aye.
I'll need a more.
Yeah, get her, yeah.
Your boss said that falls in here.
Yeah.
On to item number six, regular calendar. 6.1, Coronavirus Disease 2019 COVID-19 Update, Staff Report and Presentation by City Manager Alexander Henderson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. A brief update this evening, we continue with our vaccination clinic at Fire Station Number Two. At this point, we've given over 2,500 doses. I did get a report this morning from Chief Perkins, he said that last week was our lowest attended week, but over the weekend, there were several inquiries, so we suspect that with Memorial Day weekend and folks getting out and about, that maybe there were some certain activities that are requiring vaccinations, and so now folks are wondering about the availability of them. So we do have a call scheduled tomorrow with Fresno County related to the vaccination clinic as well, so I'm assuming they have some input on, you know, I know that they've seen lower numbers kind of throughout the county, so I think that they're still, still trying to push vaccinations, and they might have an update with regards to how long our clinic may be in operation. But that's all I have for that. And then a little bit of more information with regards to the American Rescue Plan Act. The Treasury Department did release some information for non-entitlement cities, so Kingsburg is considered a non-entitlement unit or an NEU. We've completed our requirement in confirming our DUNES number and our act of SAM registration, so that's, that's all we need to do at this point. We've also calculated what our top-line budget is. There is a 75% cap of an annual total operating budget, including the general fund and other funds, in effect as of January 27, 2020. We will not have an issue with this cap as our allocation won't, won't reach our threshold of even our general fund, so we're not concerned about that at this point. The big thing right now is non-entitlement units receive their funding directly from the state, so we're waiting, I reached out to League of Cities to see if the state has in fact made their request for their funding to come from the Treasury Department, and then obviously that will impact when they will send that money down to us. And the big thing is, we're just kind of waiting to see if the state will have additional reporting requirements, so before we start to have some of those more in-depth conversations about what type of funding the council thinks is available, it can be helpful to know what type of reporting or certain things the state may require of us as well. I did include in this report sort of some updates that came out from, from the Treasury Department. It does have some frequently asked questions in there that talks a little bit about what types of items are eligible at this point. We've talked about a good majority of those previously. So I anticipate that when, once the final guidance comes out, there will be some additional briefings with the League of Cities, and cities, you know, will be able to ask more specific questions about specific eligibility of uses. The Treasury Department, and earlier in May, came out with what they call a final rule that identified a non-exhaustive list, and it's about 39 pages long. So we've, we've tried to go through that as much as we can, but I think once we get into more elaborate discussions here, then we will be able to reference that a little bit closer. So that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any council discussion?
I have a question. For the clinic at Fire Station Number Two, I know right now we're open, what is it, Tuesday to Saturday, 8 to 5 or 6 maybe, right? In the future, what is that going to look like? Are we going to have it, like, full?
So I, I think our expectation is going to be that they're going to ask to limit those days, so do something like a Friday or Saturday clinic, or they're going to examine the data from the last, you know, seven or eight weeks and see when the higher appointment times are, but we're expecting to have some more of those conversations tomorrow. But when we originally set up the clinic, we were thinking it would run through June, possibly into July, but you know, it's, it's through OptumServe, and OptumServe has a contract specifically with the state of California, so I don't know if the state is changing some of their requirements with regards to what those sites have to produce with regards to vaccinations in order to keep all of them open, since they, you know, they're, they're paying that contract, but hopeful to find out a little bit more about that tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
Alex, you said that, excuse me, you said that last week was our lowest amount of people getting vaccinations, and then you said there was some calls about getting them, though?
Yeah, so late in the week, Chief Perkins mentioned, you know, so kind of over the weekend, and then early into this week, he mentioned that there was a lot of calls to the site.
Probably, yeah.
Assuming, you know, his assumption was maybe the uptick was related to people going out, you know, through, over Memorial Day and maybe running into some, some challenges, or maybe they have planned, planned travel or things like that, that they're, that they're anticipating, so I think, I mean, obviously it's different, he just, we just, it was an anomaly kind of at the end of the week of.
I was thinking, didn't the governor come out with, the state came out with a pay of, like, millions of dollars for people that get the vaccination or eligible for possibly to win money?
Yeah.
Did you hear about that?
Yeah, I think.
That's what I'm thinking, maybe we could, people are calling, they want to win money.
Yeah, there's a lottery, I think that there's a lottery for anyone.
There's a lottery, there you go, yeah.
Those who give the vaccination and those who may. The state also came out with some guidance with regards to larger events, and so, you know, going to go to a, you know, baseball game, football game, or concert or something like that, I think there's less, if you're vaccinated, there's less restrictions with regards to masking, things like that, so that might be driving some of it as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, okay.
That's a good point, though, I hadn't, I hadn't considered the lottery component.
Yeah. Because they just announced that late in the week, I believe.
Can you only enter the lottery if, if you haven't gotten your shot yet?
No, we're all, we're all entered.
You're automatically entered.
I think they said, people that have already, have already had it are automatically entered.
But we can't get the gift, like, there's a gift card, right?
You're talking about the one that the county was giving?
County was, yeah.
Like, at our specific site? No.
But it was state also.
But that, we've already had ours, though, so. And for the money, we already have.
Can you confirm that this is all still, everything that we're doing at the clinic, everything is still reimbursed? It's all still reimbursable monies? So we're not, we're not out of pocket?
From FEMA?
So if this does continue through July, it's not taxing the city specifically, it's all reimbursable money?
Correct.
We just have to float until reimbursement?
Correct.
Have there been considerations made for the heat?
Yes, so the, the specific plan that they came up with in the, sort of the incident command plan, says that anytime it gets over, I think it was 80 degrees, there are certain measures that we undertake, and so includes the deployment of additional canopies, there's some fans that we have, and then obviously water and other things, so luckily, at this point, there's never like a really long line that's snaking, so, you know, we're able to move folks in and out pretty quickly, but I know that they have considered, considered that as part of their overall plan.
Any other council discussion? No? Okay. Thank you. Item 6.2, approve the professional services agreement with National Demographics Corporation to provide demographic and districting services related to the mandated 2020 U.S. Census analysis. Staff report and presentation by City Clerk Abigail Pelsgaard.
I can't believe it's been pulled.
Six seconds.
Search for timer. I get five minutes. Good evening, council members and Mayor North. I bring in front of you today the professional services agreement with the National Demographics Corporation. As the U.S. government releases census data, data every 10 years, cities must examine districts, district registered voter information, and redraw lines to ensure that each district is substantially equal in population, be geographically compact, neither in favor nor discriminate against political parties. By contracting with NDC, as we did in 2018, council and the public will have a streamlined process with easy-to-use tools for public engagement. We have budgeted $25,000 for the redistricting process. So by approving this contract, we're able to lock down our dates with NDC. There's lots of, every city that has districts will be going through this at the same time. Our districts, our maps must be approved April 2022, so we're in the beginning process. The census data is delayed from being released, so we're all hoping hopefully September, and then we can move forward with the process after that. Do you guys have any questions?
I have a couple. So what is the $25,000 cover?
All right, let me, I think that's interesting to know. So there's, it's based on population, there's a flat fee, I think it's $11,500 for them to assist us with pulling the data. Let me see. All right, so this is for us here. So everything except for the per-meeting and the extra expenses, it's $11,500. Well, there, there will be at least four public hearings, so we budgeted for the first one to be in person, so that the representatives are here, so we could see them, talk to them, the public could interact with them in person, and the next three could be virtual meetings with them calling in or zooming in with us through the process. We won't need the project website costs, we already have a dedicated webpage for our redistricting in 2018, so we would do another one for this process. We did include the $7,500 for the mapping tool options, it's kind of the best of both worlds, so it's online, it's using their data, but there's also a paper-based way to do it for people that don't have internet access, so they could also participate, or they could come in person to our meetings and draw out maps. So we could do it both ways. So that's what the costs are. So it's their flat fee, it's their mapping tools, and it's the four public hearings that we'll have with them.
And three virtual, one in person?
That's what we're budgeting for, yeah.
This process, when we first had to go through it, I think all three of you weren't on council yet, it was, it was new to all of us, and it's a different company.
Same company.
Same company.
Yeah.
They, we got maps from the public, and they gave us maps. Anyone could give maps of what they thought the best division would be for districting. What we had to make sure is that the demographics were represented and equal, and they also went down to as far as register voters, how many people actually voted in the last And they also went down to as far as register voters, how many people actually voted in the last election and like age of, of voters. So it was, it was great information for us when we were really looking to do what was right for Kingsburg.
I remember looking at the final map and what those demographics were and it was very evenly split.
And if it's not, I know the maps on our website, I don't know if the spreadsheet with the breakdown is on there. Okay, so that's-
It might be there.
Um, so that, that's what they do for us is they show us all that data. So anyone that turns in a map or council discusses the map, they're able to break it down to make sure we're legally proceeding correctly.
Good question, I don't know, it's not necessarily about this, but is there a scenario in which we can go away from the districting? I know that there is some like that, is that a possibility?
Great question, Brian. Mike?
Well, we went into the districting as a result of litigation.
Yeah.
So either, you know, the council could, you could make a decision to go away from this. But in the end, I think that, that would probably generate additional litigation.
There's still cities at large that are getting sued to move to, to districts.
And wouldn't it depend on the census data that we get in September? Of percentages?
For redrawing the lines, yeah, so.
For redrawing the lines, yes.
Yeah, and that, that initial fee, they'll look at our data for existing districts to see, it might be fine, but we might wanna redraw them anyway. So that's all part of the process, but there's more developments, you know, up eighteen. Yeah.
So when, I guess my question is because I wasn't at the decision making table at the time, I was more on the community side of it. So once the community sends us their ideas and they work with the NDC to really put together what they think is representative of this council and the city as a whole, we get so many maps and then we choose from those or are we able to give input at the public? Do you know what I'm saying? Like should we not do it at the public time and wait till it comes to the table?
I know, there are workshops, right?
Like are we allowed to go to those workshops? So how does that work?
Yeah, but you, you make the final decisions on the districting map, which you have some amount of input, you know, from the standpoint of looking, you could even draw your own maps if you would like to.
Yeah.
They also, they take the public maps, the ones that are turned in and they look and see like if it would meet the legal requirements.
Yes, requirements, yeah.
And that's why we have four public hearings regarding it. So if, you know, I draw a map, I drew a map the last time too. But if you draw, you know, it's kind of cool to do, if you draw a map and you find out that the demographics aren't equal, then you'll have time to adjust your map accordingly.
By that fifth meeting, you're, they're there with kind of the finals.
By April, you guys will have the final, the final ones that are, are legally.
So in hopes that by, what is it, the November election of that year?
That's why we have to have it, it has to be-
June, right?
By April twenty twenty two, they have to be accepted. Cause then you have to send it to the clerk and then they have to get their stuff ready too, so.
So it's gonna be like the last time all over again?
Yes, but all cities are doing it at the same time right now, so.
And there's only three of these in the state, three companies that do this, right?
Yeah, there's, there may be more, but there's a handful, these guys are highly regarded. If you look through their proposal, they've worked with a lot of cities.
They did, yeah, they walked us through it and-
It's a lot of information and they really break it down, so it's easy to understand.
And I think that's the most important part is that this process needs to be accessible to the common ear. Just somebody walking down the street, they wanna be able to understand.
Yeah.
What is a district, why is it important and how do we make it happen?
Absolutely.
And that amount of money seems fairer, I'm totally good with it.
Yeah.
To make sure that the public is involved in that process.
Sounds good.
How late are we expecting the actual census data to come in?
It was supposed to be in the spring, so they're thinking right now. So the U.S. Government releases it and then California adjusts it with the prison inmate population and that is expected to take about a month, so hopefully for sure October.
So I have a question, so districts aren't required by the state then? Because I was under the impression, I mean, I knew, I knew this city had litigation, you know, is why they went to this. But I thought that Sacramento had sent out, you know, a, a ordinance or something where all cities in California by a certain year had to go to districts, but, so they don't?
They require fair representation in elections.
Yeah, under the Voting Rights Act, there are specific requirements that have to be met. And so I think that there are still communities that without districting essentially meet those requirements. And so they could just be at large.
Be at large, okay.
Kingsburg specifically faced the threat of litigation for underrepresentation, so.
Twenty eighteen, yeah.
After NDC examined the, the data and then it showed that we, we, you know.
Should go to districts. I see, okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? And the action is to approve it? Okay, I'll need a motion. Yes, thank you. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? Is there anyone on the phone that would like to comment on this agenda item? Hearing none, we'll close public comment, thank you, Joel. Okay, so now we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six point three are twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year budget introduction, presentation by City Manager Alexandra Henderson.
I'm gonna take this off for the, for the presentation. All right, so tonight is our, we've kind of been going over the last several meetings, little portions or portions of the budget. So this evening is the, our recommended proposal to the council. You don't actually make a motion this evening, we'll do that during a public hearing in a couple of weeks at our, our June sixteenth meeting. But I am gonna try and take you through a, a kind of a high level overview of kind of what we did this current year and then what we're looking at going forward. So just quickly, budget is our most important document that this council adopts every single year. It's a blueprint for policy decisions and it ties into all of the strategic goals that have been passed by the council and those, those goals are up there. So I'll just go through. So if you recall here about a year ago, we took some conservative measures because we weren't really sure what was going to happen with COVID. So this is a slide that I just grabbed from last year's PowerPoint and, and plugged it in here. So we adopted a budget that expected about a ten percent revenue reduction in the general fund. We also reduced our expenditures by about three and a half percent. But we also, in order to kind of make those two numbers meet, we utilized some fund balance through our economic stabilization funds and our equipment reserves in order to continue to operate and, and weather that storm is what we were anticipating. We did continue to include our economic development incentives, which, which were, were well used. And then continued to, to budget for that important capital improvement funding, but held off on a lot of it for a good portion of the year until we, until we felt more comfortable in, in the middle of this year. So where are we now? So our, our property taxes are kind of in line, those are pretty, pretty, you know, it's pretty steady every single year. Sales tax and transient occupancy tax, occupancy taxes, which is what we get from our, our bed stays are, have been trending higher than what we budgeted for last year, so that, that's a good thing. They are still lower than a non-COVID year, but we budgeted conservatively just in case. Other things have continued pretty steady, but we are anticipating about a three hundred thousand dollar general fund surplus. A big reason for that is, is that the impacts of COVID have been less than we anticipated. And so because this council budgeted conservatively, we're gonna see a little bit of, of a, of a surplus. And we've also seen building permit fees, that sort of activity continue pretty steadily, right? So we've talked a lot here about a lot of commercial development that's continued through COVID and obviously, you know, housing development here in, in California and in the country continues to, continues to, to grow significantly. Some expenditures that we have every single year, and we'll go through this as we run through twenty twenty two as well. But just of note, there's a, there's a portion of the general fund that helps subsidize our ambulance and our, our fire department. A lot of that helps fund itself through charges for services and, and fees that we receive for providing those medical transports, through reimbursements from the federal government as well. But there is a portion of the, of the general fund that covers that as well. And then our, our planning and building professional services. So Dave is a consultant for us, obviously, we have a planner right now that helps with planning services. All those things are expenditures, but those are all for the, for the vast majority offset by those, those fees that we collect through building permits and plan check, things like that. Our police department accounts for just shy of fifty percent of our general fund costs, relatively normal. In fact, probably for a national trend, probably a little bit lower than a lot of general funds for municipalities. And then I talked a little bit about some of the surplus and the reason we got there. Kind of break down our individual funds outside of the general fund. So recreation funds, our, our rec funds that include the pool and our senior center services. So some of our pool revenues are actually a little bit higher than they normally are because we had such a longer season, right? So a lot of, because of a lot of the high school things were canceled, we were able to continue with lap swimming, aqua aerobics, things like that. Most of those are offset by the expenditures that we have for teaching, you know, like we have an aqua aerobics instructor that we pay as well, but some of the things were higher than they have been in years past. And then our, our senior center, while all those contracts that helped fund those meals were canceled by those agencies, we, the council made the decision to utilize CARES dollars and then also some of our, our specific community development block grant funding that came out of some of that COVID legislation to help fund not only the purchase of the supplies and the meals, but to help offset some of those wages that are normally covered by those contracts as well. And you'll see later in our accomplishments, but they're, obviously this, this group in Adams here as well, but they've put together over thirty five thousand meals over the last year and prepared and, and delivered them. So a pretty significant accomplishment during this time. Our special revenue funds, also broken out, these are, are specific funds where we receive dollars that can only be used for a specific purpose. We have two of them, our local transportation funds and then also our Measure E, public safety tax. Most of our, of these things are in line with, with, with our projections, they don't usually fluctuate that much. And last year, at least for our local transportation funds, which are a lot, usually fuel taxes, things like that, they were anticipating a very large drop off, so we budgeted for that. They, that remains, you know, pretty accurate to what we've seen today. But you can see some of the projects that we use at least our, our local transportation funding for, which is usually road, road and street maintenance. So for this year, we did a handful of projects using both SB one dollars in our, in our local, in our local funds. Enterprise funds, we, we operate three enterprise funds, which are business style funds, so they don't make, you know, not intended to make money, they're, they're broken out so they can show that there's a fee for that particular service. And what we recoup for it, we have three, we, we run a water utility. We have solid waste, which is not really us running it, it's, we, we franchise with Mid Valley Disposal or a contracted provider. And then our ambulance and our fire department, obviously because those are, are fee based services as well. Water sales are in line with what we projected before the year started. Solid waste similarly close, that fund is underperforming right now because of CPI. And there, for all those accounts, there's been no penalty charges that we've collected over the last year. So for our water utility and our solid waste ones, because of COVID related legislation, we were unable to, to charge those. And so those are lower than what we were projected because some of that legislation is, is not in place when we adopted this last year. And then some of our larger capital projects occur in our water fund. So we're just about to complete our TCP treatment plants. And so that was about five million dollars total that, that, that project took. And then we have had, and we mentioned a little bit earlier, there are some higher projections this year for our ambulance and our fire fund. Some of that is related to the COVID clinic, but then we also participate in wildfire callouts when we're able to. So if we're able to send a staff to those locations, we'll do it and then ultimately we're, we are reimbursed. There's just a timeline, there's a floating of cash between when those costs are incurred by us and then when we receive the, the reimbursement. So for this year, again, our, our sixth consecutive year of a distinguished budget award, provided over two, almost two hundred thousand dollars in small business grants, COVID small business grant through our CARES funds. We continue to see a lot of our economic development programs well utilized, which was good. I think it, obviously, especially during the pandemic, it's good to see that continuing investment in the community. And then, you know, our commercial development has, has continued to, to, you know, take off, which is, which is good. So T-Mobile and then Venice Grocery Outlet, Dutch Brothers will be starting soon. Obviously the former, the Woods Building, which now has Casaros and the B of A Building is, is under construction right now. And then London Proktyz, which is next door to us here, the former Olson Brothers Building was a long vacant building that was repurposed the past year. There's a couple of other highlights on, on the right hand side there. Process permits, both commercial and residential, over fifty million dollars in valuation. So again, a, a busy year from that front, continuing investment in our public spaces. And, and you know, obviously the last year was mostly consumed by COVID related responses, you know, keeping up with guidelines, trying to support, support small businesses and then ultimately getting testing and vaccination clinic locally. Any questions on this year before I jump into next year? So our main general fund, our revenue sources are there, we talked a little bit about them previously and, and we talked about a lot of them here, but sales tax, our transient occupancy tax, building permitting and licensing, motor vehicle license fee, which is a, a fee that's charged via part of your, your registration fee. Our rec fees, you know, those go to cover the cost of those services, but they are a portion of, of the general fund and, and property taxes. And you can see a little bit there of kind of the, the diversity of, of where our general fund revenues come from with property tax, motor vehicle and sales tax being the, the three largest one at the top of that. This is a, a, our revenue trend over the last five years. Twenty twenty has a transfer in, so it looks a little bit abnormally high because we then made a equitable payment for our purse pension as well. So that's why you see that amount in there. But trending, you know, relatively close to around six million or a little bit more each year for, for our general fund. And generally our practice to be a little bit conservative with our revenue forecasting and then hopefully, you know, it performs better as opposed to the opposite direction. And then you can see just, this is a revenue and expense trend. So revenues are sort of the lighter orange one on the left there and expenditures on the right. Always good when the one on the left is higher than the one on the right. Our for, our general fund forecast for the upcoming year, again, police makes up the largest portion of that general fund budget, just shy of fifty percent. And you can see the rest of the breakdown there as well in that fund. So just kind of go through briefly, a couple of highlights, you know, you can see what's there. So City Council and Admin covers the majority of non-police funding. So myself, Abby, Alma, every, you know, human resources, admin services, community services are, those are all tied into those accounts. A couple of notes for the coming year, our planning, we're anticipating hiring a, a new full time community development director. So that's our planning director, right now we have a consultant in that position. He's preparing to retire at a certain point. And we're at the point now where we're busy enough that we need someone in that position more frequently to to respond to planning related issues. And so that is really both that's housing. So every time there's a new subdivision, that has to run through planning, engineering, that's commercial development. That's the aesthetics that you see in our downtown building. And then we're also looking at funding a part time neighborhood improvement officer, which is similar to to code enforcement. Right now, a lot of that falls under our our building inspections department. And in, you know, normal times, there are enough time to kind of be able to do both in that one position. But with housing as it is and commercial as it is, the vast majority of his time is dedicated to doing those actual inspections. And so then we run into issues with not being able to get to some of those code enforcement things, which are important too, because those maintain property values and they're they're things that I know, you know, Kingsburg is well known for being, you know, a a clean community too. And, you know, some of those things are, there's some studies, obviously, broken windows theories that, you know, code enforcement, lack of that can can lead to crime issues later too. So we we view that as an important position moving forward. From the police side, maintains our existing general fund positions. So there's seventeen total positions in the general fund. And we'll talk a little bit later about our reallocation of of our unaccrued or unfunded accrued liability, which is our pension obligation. Actually, it is lower of the general fund responsibility in the police department, but it just shifts it based upon where those funds are are actually getting spent. We have our our annual contract with the with Fresno County to to do our dispatching service, which is based upon our population, which has grown over the last couple of years. So we're planning for that as well.
Question really quick on the police, the tobacco grant that funds our SRO, does that end in twenty-two?
I don't think so. I think that that I think that we are in the middle of year or just started year two. So I think from when it started to, I think we put that position in and it eventually got started in February or March of twenty twenty. So I think it goes, but I'll I'll confirm that for sure. But I I think it's, I think it's a little longer. Not a whole lot of changes in our our public works landscaping, vehicle maintenance. Obviously, those are all all under the public works umbrella. But there's some capital projects that we have planned for the year that including some painting, fixing some fencing, and then we have some household hazardous waste that that we need to remove as well. Again, rec funds, basically, we're anticipating a kind of a return this summer. So we're actually the season, the preseason for lap swimming and aqua aerobics has been open. But next week, the pool opens back up. So public swim, swimming lessons, Friday night swim, things like that. So Adam and his group have been communicating with the county and will continue to follow some specific sanitation requirements that that they're asking us to do as well. And our staff will follow. But we're anticipating that hopefully we'll see a relatively, you know, similar pre pre pandemic summer with regards to with regards to the pool. We do split costs with the high school fifty fifty on during certain years. We have a joint powers agreement with them and so or during certain months, excuse me. So we take over fully in the summertime because they're not using it. And then we split costs with them for their for the remainder of the year. And then they help split costs for all of our, you know, capital purchases and things like that as well. Senior center costs, we're going to continue preparing meals right now. We're hoping that there will be some additional funding out there. But if that doesn't occur, probably have some conversation about either additional general funds subsidy or the potential use of ARPA dollars or things like that too. But we're also meeting this week to see about a return to at least some activity back at the senior center. So there's been some some statewide guidance that has been put out on that, so working on that as well. Again, our our special revenue funds, our local transportation funds, we are looking at some like gas tax. They're projecting a rebound, a few more people out traveling. So I'll see those numbers increasing, same for same for Measure C, similar formula. And then we have some some projects planned for next year. The road projects, the SB one funds, which Ventura Street and then Seventh Street will be on on our list for for next year. Measure E, so we we kind of went through this last our last meeting. But Measure E has been continuing to outperform our projections. So a lot of that's related to online shopping and that full one percent coming back to the city. Does so for the upcoming year, maintains eight employees that we currently have, adds an additional five new positions. We are, we did find out that the health that the healthcare district is going to fund those additional positions that we put in a grant for. So we'll we'll have to, what's that? Yeah, for the fire department, yeah. So we have, they have to, they they voted on that last week. They're gonna, you know, that'll come back before you in an actual agreement in the future. So we will have to adjust this a little bit at that time, but go ahead.
Did they give you any word on the senior center project?
No to the senior center. So and no to Athwa, so. That was just, I haven't heard any details, it's just I just got the results, yeah. And then obviously, we talked about adding some of those other capital items that both chiefs gave presentations on last last time. Our our enterprise funds, pretty similar to previous years. Probably the the one, the one note is that we receive, again, we receive dollars from the from the federal government for depending upon the type of patient that we transport in in our ambulance. So if they don't have private, if they don't have private insurance, they have Medicare or Medicare or something like that, we only get a portion. There's a there's a flat rate that we receive, which is less than the amount that it costs us to do it. And so then we get funding returned from the federal government. Because of a change on on their end in this upcoming year, it's a it's an eighteen month cycle. So we'll receive one additional payment that we normally would not like a one time payment. So that's a note for the for the next year and then they'll get back on a twelve month cycle. And then from the solid waste side, the last time, and we've talked about this finance committee, I know we've talked about it a little bit here, but the last time that there was a rate adjustment for solid waste was in two thousand and nine. And so that fund itself is starting to underperform because there are CPI increases that are built into to their contract. And so we have included funding for a rate study to determine future fee, a potential future fee adjustment. And there's also some new state mandates. I remember Mid Valley was here a month or two ago and talked about some of those organic requirements that are going to be at the commercial level. So we have to incorporate those in our fee structure. But we have the funding in here, but you will see a proposal once we get that finalized for consideration prior prior to that moving forward. Some other funds of note that are separate from our general fund are development impact fees. So this is collected on new eligible development, both residential and commercial. So there's just some numbers there about some of the single family residential where we collect funds on. Those can only, those funds that are collected can only be spent on certain things related to those impacts that they're making. So you can't take them and use them to cover your, you know, current operational funds, things like that. You can put them in, like, for example, you know, you collecting an amount every single for every single new home. And then if you have to build a new police station or build a new fire station or something like that, or you have to you have to drill a new water well or something, then there is funds in those account that that you can tap in order to pay for those things. And they're they're they've been borne then by the by the impact of of those of that new development.
Do they stay in a little fund to the side until that occasion arises?
Yeah, so they all, we have, I think, hang on, it's eight or nine different development impact fee funds that are specific to a certain use that can only be used. And they vary by how much money they have in each of them, because each of them has a different amount that we collect. And and that is supported by a nexus study that we have done by a third party. So we can't just charge any amount that we want. It's it's supported by what we what we plan for in the future and what we anticipate that cost and that that cost to be a certain at a certain time.
For the, I'm blanking on the name of this new senior homes.
Linea Villas.
Do they have to pay impact fees if it's a, if it's a, like a, it's a, are they a nonprofit, the Fresno Housing? Or whatever, of a group, you know, buys.
Because they're, yeah, because the the housing authority. So we charge them impact fees, but as part of their their financing plan in order to get tax credits, the city agreed to defer those impact payments. And it basically became a part of their financing structure that helped helped them get the tax credits in order to build the facility, so.
So I guess my question too was if in the future, there was any part of the city annexed in or we rezoned at some point for affordable housing, would they have an impact fee? I guess was also part of that question. Or would it just probably be similar because it might be the same kind of group?
I mean, we charge the fee for new development. Now, the council, for example, in order to do the agreement for Linea Villas and in order for the financing to work with the housing authority, the council approved of that impact fee deferral. So I guess the short answer is yes, we would charge it. And then sort of long answer is be is dependent upon, you know, what that looked like or what the financing package was or what the request was of the developer, then the council then would have the opportunity to consider a similar situation.
I guess because it's different because like for these developments, it's homeowners versus a group who's buying land and making up an affordable housing or an apartment or something. I guess that's the difference.
Yeah, so if it's if you're talking about single family residential, what's happening, I mean, it's being, you're right, it's homeowners because they're going to pay for it probably when they buy their house. But we charge the developer, right? So the developer, you know, the home builder is coming to us, they're pulling the permit to build the house. They have to pay that fit that that fee, there's a, they have to pay their building permit fee, they have to pay their impact fees. They have to pay, the school has an impact fee, the schools have an impact fee. So they have to make all make all those payments before they can get a permit issued to them. And then, you know, it's passed on, you know, to the homeowner, the buyer at that point. They're they're, that's all part of their pro forma to decide how they're going to sell their, you know, what they're going to sell the houses for.
On our property taxes.
Well, on your property taxes, you have something like community community facilities districts and landscape and lighting, which are up there too. So those are like the annual assessments that are on there to pay for the ongoing maintenance of of those things. So impact fees are, they're a one time fee that gets collected at the time of building permit, whereas those these other things are annual because there are annual costs that, you know, continue after a home is built. And so, you know, there it's kind of a differentiation in of time within the city. So landscape and lighting districts, you know, basically pay for just that, right? So streetlights and and landscape.
And just that area.
Yeah, in that in that area that those people are paying for that. And the community facilities district, it pays for similar things in the same area too. But there's also, there are other things that it can fund, which are, you know, like public safety services and things like that. Because the cost of police and fire and things like that, you know, increase or outweigh how much your property taxes go up, right? And so there's a council, when when they decided to enact these community facilities districts said, you know, if we're going to grow, we need to make sure that, you know, those folks are paying their fair share going forward because otherwise, we're going to grow too quickly and not have the ability to have, you know, enough police, enough fire, enough city staff, things like that too. So or like, for example, you know, we have a lot of older neighborhoods that have alleys that are in need of repair, right? But we don't have a mechanism to fund alley improvements, right? We we have local transportation dollars, which are not supposed to be, they're supposed to be used on roads. And we have enough roads that need to be repaired that there's not really enough money for those alleys necessarily. Well, now, going forward in the new communities, there is a there's a mechanism to to repair those things and so.
And and for, you know, those are for the new developments. For our older developments, you brought up alleys specifically, which is a question I was going to ask. And those repairs, I know we have the streets, that program or thing that the that Dave put together which streets have a higher need to be fixed. Do we have something like that for alleys and lights? Because I know some of the lights are owned by PG&E, some of them are ours. And is there a way or have we already done like a study on which lights are working and which ones aren't? And which alleys are ugly and which ones are?
Well, so we do have, it's a it's a little older now, but we do, I think there is a an evaluation of the alleys and their condition. What we don't really have is a is a is a way to pay for the their repairs. So what we've said previously is if, you know, if there's a group of homeowners that want their alley repaired, they essentially have to create a community facilities district like this. We would do it for them, but then they would be paying an assessment for, you know, the next twenty years, you know, sort of like they're, you know, they're, we're borrowing, taking care of the alley repair, and then they're paying us back for that over the next twenty years through their property taxes, similar to what new individuals are doing. So that's one thing. For lights, there are, there is a mixture of PG&E owned versus what we own. We actually, all the PG&Es were retrofitted to LED. We've gone through and retrofitted ninety-nine percent of the ones that we own to LED. So when you say like, if they're not working, that's just a matter of letting us know, you know what I mean? Like letting letting staff know and then we'll either go, if it's ours, we'll go take care of it, or if it's PG&Es, we'll contact them.
Question, in these funds, when a developer decides to build more houses instead of green, adding green space, there's a specific fund for green space, correct? Do you know how much we have in that fund?
I I can show it to you and once we get, once we get through that, bookmark that and then I'll I'll go to the to the actual budget and I'll pull it up. Yeah, so but the developer either puts in the green space or pays the fee, not both. So that becomes a little bit of a policy decision about, do you want neighborhood parks, smaller sort of top lot neighborhood parks in every new development, but then they're probably, they're not going to pay that fee and pay into that fund? Or do you want more sort of regional, larger parks that then, you know, you don't have them in every neighborhood, but then you have them close to, you you master plan them in a neighborhood and then you're, it's it's the city's responsibility then to to build, well, to build it. They they all get maintained by us because it's it's a requirement that then they give it back to us. And that's what like a CFD would pay for, that's a portion of that, is the people that are living there are going to pay for the maintenance of it. And then what we do is contract out with a, you know, a landscaping company that has the proper certifications and things like that, and they maintain it. But there's a mixture, I mean, public works maintains a lot of that space right now. But at a certain point, there's, you know, too much work to occur. And so you have to get to privatize a portion of it. We talked about this a few meetings ago, but this is just sort of a non exhaustive list of some of the capital improvement projects that we have planned for the coming year. And big one there, or probably the most expensive one is the Sierra Bethel Roundabout. Just a reminder, that's not, we aren't paying for that, it's a grant, it's a hundred percent highway safety improvement grant. So there's there's no city funds going into that. We have patrol car replacements, both coming out of general fund and Measure E, a number of road projects which we talked about. And then, you know, some 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 planning things that will occur as well that will help us moving forward in the future. So we've talked a little bit about in the past updating our property development standards. So when there is a new subdivision, you know, things like making sure there's conduit for cameras, you know, making sure that lighting is, you know, updated, things like that. So we're, we'll be working on that and then that will come back to the council so that you guys ultimately approve those property development standards as well. Just quickly, we talked a little bit about our PERS a few meetings ago and just an example there of this is not the normal costs or our payroll costs, this is just our our unfunded liability amounts. So again, and fiscal year eighteen paid about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the coming year, it'll be over six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. What we did is reallocated our UAL. Previously, we were basically funding allocating it based upon whether they're classic members or pepper members, which needed to change because ultimately, at some point, you're not going to have any more classic members. So we've reallocated it based upon employee salaries, which we think is probably the most equitable way to do it. And so because of that, you know, some of the things like the general fund for the police department, which I mentioned was going to go down, some of that is shifting into Measure E because Measure E is going to have a higher number of, you know, police department salaries there. So there's a percentage that goes there, there's a percentage that goes into the SRO fund. And so same thing for every one of the departments that we have. So the amount doesn't change, I mean, we, the city has to pay it regardless. It's just a matter of where it's coming out of the general fund enterprise. The amount doesn't change, I mean, we, the city has to pay it regardless, it's just a matter of where it's coming out of, we, general fund, enterprise fund, you know, the, the particular areas. And then we talked about this previously, but, uh, council has, uh, created, you know, so we have that surplus that we talked about earlier. It goes into some specific funds, let's call them, you know, specific encumbered rainy day funds to help us pay some of these things down. So we had anticipated utilizing some of this this year based upon COVID, we're probably not going to have to now because we have that surplus there. So, um, those, those, those fund amounts will remain higher and then these are, uh, the amounts that are in those individual accounts for, um, you know, for those particular purposes. Uh, and then, uh, you'll see them, uh, as part of the full document, they're, they're in here as well too, but are, are the financial policies. So, uh, some of the most important things that, uh, the council approves as part of the budget are, um, those financial policies and, um, they're, um, evaluated, uh, by our auditors and our credit rated, uh, rating agencies to ensure that we're following, um, generally accepted accounting principles and best practices, um, and so they lay out some individual things like purchasing policy and, uh, when we make budget amendments. And so that's really, really a guideline for staff to make sure that, you know, we're doing what we're telling you that we're doing and that the auditors, everything's on the up and up with, with a matter of the financials. And there are no, uh, proposed changes, uh, for, for the upcoming year and, um, so, um, it'll be similar to what you guys have considered in the past. And so, um, just, uh, you know, kind of a summary of, of, of where we're at here, um, just, again, this is kind of marking the end of our annual process of evaluating our health, uh, the community priorities, our infrastructure needs, our daily operations. Uh, we don't have a hundred percent, uh, knowledge as to what, uh, COVID brings for us, uh, long, long term, but, um, we have, we have a pretty good idea and we're in a good position financially, um, to address those concerns, um, you know, with or without the ARPA funds. And, uh, the proposed budget before you tonight, uh, is structurally balanced and, and it maintains or increases, uh, city staffing levels which will allow us to continue to provide the services, um, that residents have come to expect. And, and it also maintains those economic development incentive programs that have been really well utilized and, I mean, you can see it when you drive up Nantreper Street. Um, you know, Business Park is getting more active too, so they're taking advantage of some of those things as well. And then I will, uh, uh, so this page, uh, one fifteen, this is, this is the, this is the summary of basically every, um, every fund that we have on one page. Might just be, might just be, uh, if I can find it. Uh, so I'd say the ending fund, so right now the fund balance is at about one point four million in the special recreation fund. That's what we're projecting at the end of this year.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Any council discussion or questions?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, back to the alleys, I don't know, I'm just really frustrated with them right now, um, cause some of them just really are in desperate need of, um, some love. Um, so we have, so you mentioned that if they wanted, if a, a specific, you know, community within our town wanted their alleys fixed, they would have to create a district.
So, essentially a special assessment district, yeah.
Okay. Is there a way that as a city, we can do something similar to what we did for the, um, I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget, the, uh, the pavement index, condition index? Can we do something like that, um, for our alleys? And then, so we have a running list, unless we already do, do we?
We have, we have a, a list, but it's a, it's a, it's a dated list.
Okay, okay, so something that's updated, right? So, we can find out which areas or alley specifically are in need, just like we have that other list for streets. Because like with SB one, like we just discussed in the beginning of the meeting or was on the calendar, you know, we have certain areas of different roads, right, that are going to be fixed. For alleys, we might not have funding right now, but I think it would be important to figure out which areas are in need of that, um, construction. And I don't know if there's like alley grants, but trying to figure out where we can dip in, I don't know if Dave can maybe answer this question better or, or you or Alma, but just finding dollars because they're, they're really important. When you have an ugly alley, it's hard on even the solid waste trucks that go through there, just ugly, period.
Just real quick, we, so we've struggled with this for twenty years.
My lifetime.
Yeah. Funding opportunities for the alleys. Uh, we use, we use our CEBG funds, uh, on the alleys and our CEBG eligible areas have shrunk to a very, very small area.
Isn't it based on demographics? Yeah.
So, uh, but we can, uh, we could add the alley and the street saver.
Yeah, and we try to, I mean, lots of times we partner, like in our, in our older neighborhoods, uh, the sewers run through the alleys. And so if there is a, a sewer repair project or something like that, that we work with SKF with, then we'll repave the alley with it, we'll try and, we'll try and do something like that. If there's, if there's a water, um, if there's a water, uh, I was gonna, I didn't wanna shout out where she lived, but if there's a water main that runs in a, in an alley too, that we try and do that too and, and when those repairs happen, but, um.
Cause I think I don't, I, I don't expect that we fix, like, it's a twenty-year problem, I totally understand. But I think that once we start to look at the issue and then just bite it off piece by piece, we can eventually, just like the streets, see those improvements.
Yeah.
Cause I was driving, I don't know if we own this alley right here, but that alley right behind the old Cossaros and the fire department, right here?
Yeah, no, it's private.
Okay, cause it's really bad.
Yeah, we talked about it, we actually talked about it at our staff meeting, yeah, we talked about it at our staff meeting this morning. Um, we could try, you know, a code enforcement, but, um, you know, it becomes, you know, we, we've, we've talked to those, those property owners before and asked them, you know, to address it and it's.
Especially right now when we're recovering from a pandemic, I think that that might not be the best approach with the code enforcement. But, our North Kingsburg plan, like alleys is part of that, correct?
Yeah, so, you know, the big, one of the reasons that, I mean, and this was a few years ago now, but we had this long conversation about whether or not we wanted to continue to require alleys as a, uh, a requi- a requirement essentially of, of, uh, developers when they were coming in to build the single-family homes. And, uh, essentially the consensus was, yeah, you know, that's a Kingsburg thing, it provides, you know, it, you know, keeps trash and things in the back, it, uh, provides, you know, additional, you can put garages out the back too, to break up some of the monotony of the front yards. But then the other side of that is, is okay, well, then we need to come up with a, a way to, uh, pay for it. And so that's kind of where, that was one of the reasons the CFD, uh, came forward because it's, that's an issue that going forward, you know, those areas have a mechanism for, for, for being repaired. It's just kind of rewinding that, uh, you know, with our older neighborhoods and how do we get, how do we fund that and, um.
What year was that plan developed, North Kingsburg?
Well, the, the specific plan is, you know, that's a zoning plan, um, that requires it, um, that was in two thousand and five. But we, you know, adopted this, this, the CFDs in, I think, twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen.
So since two thousand and five, we've been asking developers to put in alleys and we're not maintaining them.
Sure.
And I think it's definitely, like I said, moving forward, that's really great that we have that pocket, you know? But unfortunately, you know, my neighborhood doesn't have that, right? So, um.
And we, and I'm sure Dave would, you know, he can help us if we want, if the council wants to pursue that, sort of that, um, identifying the count, you know, the best, the worst alleys. Um, we, you know, happy to do that, it just becomes a challenge of what you do after that.
Right, right.
Yeah, there's an alley in my district, Jewel, where it's not even paved.
Yeah.
There's, there's some unpaved alleys in Kingsburg, so.
There are.
I've, I've had, uh, inquired Alex about it, but yeah, so that, that certain area, you know, those homes that connect to that alley, they have to, uh, agree to and most of them don't want their prop- property taxes to go up and they would have to do that, so that's why.
You just have to start figuring out, if we only have X amount of dollars, do you put that on the street that everyone drives on? Or an alleyway that's mostly used by sanitation trucks, that's a tough sell.
Yes, it's, it's hard.
One percent of traffic is actually happening in the alley, as opposed to being inconvenient outside of their backyard, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, totally makes sense, but I think that's why I'm not like, put money into it right now.
Right, right, but yeah, that's good.
Identify the issue and where it might be kind of ugly, I mean, because, you know, it might not be traveled on very much.
But you, but you were saying like, to, to grade them, well, there's some that aren't even paved, so those, those would be the top of the list.
Yeah, no, there are some, for sure.
It just keeps the beautification.
Yeah, exactly, the town, yeah, I agree.
Clumbliness.
Yeah, no doubt.
It's possible we could, I know some of the, um, I know some of the, the, the local transportation funds are, there, I think there's a requirement that you use them on like vehicle lane miles and alleys are not considered for that, but I think, is it CMAC that you can potentially use? So there, CMAC is a air quality, um, one that we could, we could try and put in for.
On the dirt, on the dirt alleys.
Yeah, on, on dirt alleys, right? So, there's an air quality component that you could say, hey, there's, there's no pavement here, it's a, it's an air quality issue, we could, we could try and go after that.
The other thing we've done too on, on a alley, taking street noise.
Yep. That's the, my alley.
There is kind of.
Not my alley, but in my district.
Is there anything through, um, just trying to think out of the box, like waste management? Since we're gonna have these new requirements where they're gonna have to be picking up more, we're gonna have these, this added container. That means there's gonna be more traffic through them, I don't know. Yep.
I don't know, we probably have to, um, probably have to, you know, renegotiate something like that. They don't, you know, they'd be happy to pick it up at the street, it's our requirement that we, we have them drive down an alley, so, um, yeah, we'd have, we'd have to, I have to think about that.
And on the topic of the, um, the extra bin that's gonna be added, which I think is great, but it does come with costs. So you kind of mentioned that, um, are we just gonna wait for those guidelines and how much that's gonna cost? Is it, is it a startup cost and then it can kind of flow annually or?
Yeah, so one of the things, you might have, might have been when you stepped out that I talked about it, but, um, it's okay. Um, we're gonna do a rate study as part of all of this, so it's both residential and commercial. I think, I, I need to double check, but I think the immediate organics requirements are of commercial properties that are over, are over a certain amount, so.
That's really.
And residential's just gonna put more in the green.
Yeah.
Oh.
The green. So right now you could, you could be doing organics in your green waste right now, right? So, um, I don't think, at least right now, I don't think that there's another bin coming, uh, from the residential side. The challenge is gonna be, it's gonna be commercial and it's, you know, um, that'll be us discussing that with our businesses and Mid Valley is, obviously will be our partner on that and go out and meet with them, but.
So, the rates will go up for the commercial and not the residential?
Well, I don't, well, for that particular purpose, because they will be required to, um, add another service essentially, right? It, under certain circumstances, so I think more so restaurants who have, you know, that sort of food waste. But, you know, the residential, our rates in general haven't been increased since two thousand and nine, so that will be part of the rate, uh, study to, to examine that. Because right now that's not a, you know, outside of some of the salaries of the, um, you know, finance staff in front that help with utility billing, you know, the vast majority of that fund, of the, those dollars goes towards paying, um, you know, Mid Valley to, to collect it. It's a contract that we have and so if we're not collecting enough, you know, we're, we, the city is subsidizing that service because, you know, they're providing it.
Have more, anybody else has?
Go ahead.
Um, so for the, um, senior center, um, specifically the meals, I think what they're doing is great and you mentioned that some of the, um, whoever it was, agencies or people who were providing the money to subsidize, not only the, the meals, but sometimes even their, um, employment costs, right? Would like to pay for them to do that job. So with them pulling those, I don't know if they're contracts or agreements, what does that look like? And you said something about possibly putting our money into this specific, I would say, community services, right? Cause that's the, that's the group, um, I think that would be very important because what they showed us is that they can do so much with so little. And, um, I don't know if there's a potential to, I'm kind of looking at Adam, there's a potential to, um, make any more partnerships to be able to feed our seniors even on a non-COVID day. Um, but I think that is not, you know, we should fill that gap where the other agencies maybe filled it for COVID.
Yeah, so, I think we're, you know, our plan is, is to continue to provide meals. Um, I guess the question will be, once we come back to, um, open, what, what will that look like? Will we be doing meals, uh, there again, like limited meals? Because pre-COVID, and Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we were doing fifty-ish meals a day at the senior center. You know, post-COVID we're doing a hundred and fifty and, um, you know, bef, you know, pre-COVID, the FM AAA or EOC, you know, whoever the partner we were with at the time, they were providing the food and they were providing, uh, a stipend to us to help offset some of those costs. And so it's, we've, you know, we've taken on, you know, both of those, um, just through our CARES Act fund and so, uh, and, you know, the city, there's a subsidy every year still, even with those, those partnerships that we have, the general fund still, um, subsidizes, uh, the senior center or sends money to, that we transfer money into the senior center every single year. So it's possible though, we're just trying to kind of wade through to see what, it doesn't sound like there's gonna be any contracts for sure and now we're trying to figure out what it looks like for us in terms of back in service or what those meals will look like or whether we'll continue with the full deliveries because, um, I know EOC is doing some deliveries for us too. What that additional amount might, might be and so before we, we gotta figure that out before we bring it back to you.
And in addition, to add on to that, now that we know the senior center did not get the tri-county grant, we're gonna need to look at that kitchen.
I mean, we can't even make that many meals without the kitchen, that isn't, that's not compliant.
I think Adam has plans for that, like I think we, we can find some ways to be creative about that. And then I, it, it becomes a question too of, cause before this, um, we didn't have a, a, a real need for the kitchen because it was mostly, it was prep, right? The meals were coming and we were just warming them or they were pre, pre-cooked, things like that. So if we go back to that in a year, if we get back to that point, then the, then that great need for the kitchen, um, becomes, um, less. So, you know, we've talked internally too, if there are some interim options, you know, Adam's used, uh, I think the, the churches, some of the churches' commercial kitchens to do some prep in the past, so is there some, you know, the historical park has a historical, or has a commercial kitchen, you know, could we be creative in the interim of trying to fill the gap if it's for a, a period of time, so.
Partnership.
So we're, we're working on that too and, and, once we get feed, maybe once we get feedback, uh, from the healthcare district, we'll have a, a better idea of what, if they have some other thoughts and, you know, we can revisit that.
I was gonna say, the CARES funding, you said you're still waiting for guidelines, so possibly some of the.
The ARPA, yeah, the ARPA.
Excuse me, the ARPA, yes, the ARPA, um, you know, you can use that for the kitchen, the senior kitchen, you know? Once you get more guidelines, it's possible, right?
Well, potential, yeah.
Yeah.
Depending upon what you guys.
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of new, yeah, because this is, so the guidelines aren't here, so.
When, when that money comes out, then at that point, we can ask the tri-county healthcare district to match some sort of funds. I don't, I know they kind of just went through their whole cycle. That would be cool too, so we wouldn't have to pay for the whole thing. Was it seven hundred? Seven fifty, eight?
It came back a little, it was in the sixes, I think.
A lot of money, okay.
Any other council discussion on this item?
Do you have a more?
Yeah, I do, I have one more. Um, funding for, okay, perfect, funding for the Golden State, um, corridor, so, what does that look like? I mean, because it is just so funky and I know that there was a board of some sort for, like the beautification of Highway ninety-nine. Are we partnering with other cities? It's like, what is that twenty thousand dollars for, I guess is my question.
Landscape maintenance.
Okay, just, that's just a normal thing that we do.
Yeah, it's just, it's just maintenance for a crew to go out, but, but mostly the walking path and all that, you know? Our Public Works guys are out there too, they, they mow the middle, they do litter abatement, so. Just in city, yeah, so, you know, mostly from, what's that?
Up to Bethel?
Mountain View.
Mountain View, okay, sorry. Mountain view, okay, sorry.
So we own, we own out to mountain view.
Okay, wow.
And so um. That's what that twenty thousand for, now, all of Golden State from fourteen miles from. The end of Simpson slash Golden State, you know, down past Draper this direction, south this way, through Fowler is due. That will all be reconstructed, starting.
Next summer.
Next summer.
After ninety-nine's fixed, right?
What is reconstruction then?
I mean, that, so for us, I mean, it'll be, I don't, you know, I guess some of the larger things is ours, we're looking at realigning. Stroud, so if you drive out Stroud right now and you're going to going north, right, you're kind of at an angle, kind of looking back left. We will make that a a ninety, so that it's matched up. Um the Cam Bethel interchange, so right now, you know, you've got kind of like a, almost like a grade separation between the. So that all gets redone and um leveled, and then that includes a traffic signal there, so there's a traffic signal.
Signal at which intersection?
Cam, so the Cam and Golden State intersection before, you know, so if you, you know, if you turned left, that's where you could get on the freeway going north. And then it's just, it's it redoes all the pavement um in the city limit, so it's a little different, I think it's. Forty plus million dollar project that they've been talking about for ten or twelve years now, it's funded through measure C. And so we're getting close now, I mean, they've been working on designs for a long time, so it's a little different in every community, so. We have some railroad interaction that we have to deal with with that, other communities have, you know, some on Fowler have a little bit more. But that entire stretch then, at least from a pavement standpoint, will be in much, much better shape, so we've been trying to address, you know, potholes, things like that, but we don't wanna. Put a lot, a lot of money into it when the whole thing's gonna be redone relatively soon. And I think that there is some consideration for waiting until the ninety-nine is further along, so that they're not both entirely. Constructed.
I'll have an update on that later.
All right, that's all I had, your turn.
Can you go back to sixteen on the slide?
Oh, sure.
General fund expenditures. See, you referenced those new positions, specifically the community development director, potentially additional code enforcement, even part time. I guess my question is a little bit more logistics, do you have space for them here? And I'm asking that obviously for other reasons, because it just seems, just walking through. We're outgrowing this building, um I I think that we're gonna have to start looking at other options for that. I know that it's been discussed in the past and theory and stuff, but I think we're kind of at a point where walking through there, we need to be better than that. And I think as a council, I just want to put that on our radar, you know, I know we, I know it's not gonna be cheap. To build a new city building, but I think that we're just outgrowing it. And walking through there and seeing some of the work conditions that we have in there, the city staff is doing amazing with what they have. But adding more positions to that area, it's just gonna be too much, so I think that, and that's on us, that's not on you guys, you guys are doing the best. That you can, I just think that we really need to start looking at what we're gonna do to get a new city hall. It's expensive, it's a pain, I get it, but I think it has to happen for our staff, I just wanted to kind of put that on the radar. Cause based on just your laughter, I assume you don't have a lot of space for this.
And we don't own this part.
Yeah, well, we don't, or or the next part, so we just own the the original uh, you know, bank building. Yeah, it's um, it's a conversation we have a lot, um we're talking about, you know, basically working with a workspace consultant to come in and, you know. Give us an idea to, you know, it's probably gonna have to wipe that out and have more open, shared space spaces, things like that, but yeah, just from a. You know, just just from a a busyness standpoint, you know, part of the, you know, right now. We we have a planning director who comes in one day a week, he occupies a very small space, it's not that big of a deal, but you have someone here full time. You know, you need space to review plans and, you know, uh things like that, it's um. That that's becoming a little bit of a challenge, yeah.
Especially when I see, we don't really have great space to even entertain new businesses coming into town. Really to give good proposals and stuff, I just, I just don't know that what we have is an accurate representation of who we are, that's my biggest concern with this. I know that we do have some land out by the river, you know, if we can maybe explore that as either selling or leveraging option for other stuff.
I know Mayor Norris brought that up.
Use the money to build, yeah.
I I remember this.
Probably we sell it, leverage against it or whatever, but I think we need to start, I I don't know the exact process to start that, but I think that. You know, that's probably a multi-year project to build a new city hall, and I think that we need to start at least going down that path on our end. And that means allocating funds to start talking to somebody about that or whatever it is that you need for that, cause that's my concern, when I look at this, we plan out. Phenomenally for the budget, this whole budget procedure is great, but I just wonder, what do we do with these people when we have them?
Are we still, are we using the reception or the old reception area in station, our main station over here?
So we have um, so there there is, now there's an administrative person there for for the fire department, and we we've talked about this a little bit. It's just a question of how we split those departments, so. It's just very difficult, you can't have a part of the finance department here and a part of them over there, it's, you know, we we don't wanna. If you're taking permits here, you know, you don't want people, you know, how do we, how do we split those people up and, you know, the building inspection, the planning department. Permitting department up front, you know, it's four or five different people. I I don't, you can't really have them separated, right, so you kinda, you gotta, you gotta kinda gotta pick who's gonna be in one location and then try and figure out who we could potentially. You know, move, um and um. So we have, we've talked about that a little bit, I, you know, before my time, I think all of the planning, building department actually went out and occupied. Fire station number two, even when that wasn't being used, um you know, my understanding, just from talking to staff, is that there was some frustration from. You know, whether you're pulling a permit or a developer or whoever you are, that you're having to go to a separate location uh entirely and, you know.
It just seems like we're we're a better city than having to shuffle people to house them at a fire station, you know what I mean? Talking about directors having to work elsewhere, all that, it's, it just seems like we're at a point where we need to actually start. Looking at leveraging or selling land, if that's what it's gonna take, if we can't find it elsewhere in the budget.
We talked about it before, um and then the other thing is, where are you gonna build it? You know, there's a couple of sites we talked about several months ago, but. That's that's a. One of the issues also.
No, I.
It's gonna be a process.
I I know we have, I I have some some work to do on getting some answers on on some of that property, so.
Estimates?
Yeah.
This might be a silly question, we can't build up cause we don't own it, or would that not even be, like, if we did purchase this, could you build up, like, is that against? Plan, I don't know, I'm not a.
I mean, I I I'm not sure I have the structural ability, but you can, we could definitely build up, I mean, you just have to put in the adequate, you have to put in a lift or. An elevator or something like that.
At a certain point, it's just not.
Yeah.
It's just worse.
To purchase the entire building, then retrofit it, then make it all up to code, and then add additional layer, redo structure, and just.
And we don't even own this part, so I mean.
Right.
And we're paying for new carpet in a building that we don't own and we're paying for the lease.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to, I mean, we need to, you know, it's, you know, if we stay, you know, if we end up staying, we're gonna stay for a little bit either way, even if we. Make this commitment, it's gonna be a little way, and we just have to do some some general things, some workplace things, you know, we were talking this morning about upgrading the security in the building and, you know, just. Modernizing it a little bit, I mean, I think we, I like the quaintness of the building certainly, but there are also like really, you know, there's important things here, right, you know, we've had to. Secure our server room and do things like that, just because, you know, you can't, you don't wanna look back because something happened and, you know, take the proper precautions, so.
Alex, is there anything we can do to start moving towards that process?
If you guys are comfortable with, you know, staff kind of. Working a little freely and just making sure that we're coming back to you guys and um giving you updates, I I, like I said, I know Mayor Norris been um. Talking about some of that property for a while, and I just, I just have to put those pieces in motion, um. You know, we can, we can take it from there and then bring it back, as long as everyone's kind of on the same page, just, so it's not a surprise, right, so we don't come back and, yeah.
I'll leave that to you, I mean, I'm obviously in favor of moving forward.
Yeah, I'm open to it, no doubt.
Start it, at least presenting some options.
Yeah, definitely, cause it is very small.
Maybe starting with the estimate of that land?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it the only land that we own? I mean.
I mean, outside of that we're occupying, I think there's there's one, there's one piece of property, like smaller half piece of property on um. In the uh business park that we own, that has been the uh, it's been designated for a future well site, potentially, that's why the city has it. Other than that. No other land. Outside of the Hank Ash Fields that. You know, it's gonna have a baseball field on it.
On Saturday.
Pretty soon, yeah.
Other than that, I just wanted to bring that up, cause I know that that's, shoot, we could just have maybe that direction for staff. Just, you know, as freely as you're comfortable with, I think the council supports it for more, to move forward with it.
For a discussion?
Other than that, I I just think the presentation overall is very clear.
I have one more thing that just came to mind, because you mentioned the space and how. We need to start looking into that investment, um I did a uh write along, I'm gonna kinda put him on the spot, I was talking to uh Captain Osborne. I did a write along on. Last week, I did a write along with the fire department, and we were kinda talking about how um our public works. Will work on some of their trucks sometimes, um but the space that is there at the public works, I don't know, yard, right? Um he said something about when they do have to work on them, they're, and it's hot or if it's raining, right, just depends on the conditions. That they're either right in the sun, cause it's outside, they're gonna be fixing it, and he was talking about how it could be really nice and. You know, if there was some sort of garage, I don't know if this has been brought up before, I mean, I had never heard of that, so um need. And so I don't know if we looked into that before or how that would work, but um I'd be interested in exploring it.
Yeah, we have a, we have a mechanics bay, but it's possible that just from the size of some of the fire department's equipment, that it doesn't necessarily fit in the mechanics bay, so. I know that the public works department and the public works director is working pretty hard on trying to get that site just like cleaned up. Sort of as as step one, but um, yeah, I mean, that's a good question, I mean, I can have a conversation with the.
And I haven't gone over there and even looked around since I got elected, and then when I did my police ride along, that we just kinda drove by.
Yeah.
And so I haven't really, so that's kind of on me too, to not really know what the need is, like, but I think just looking at that whole area in general, it's like, what are some of their needs? To look into forward, you know, um sorry, future projects.
It's a good thought.
Fill those gaps.
And we we've talked about even just like uh some sort of tilt up or something that could be for more storage and other things, but maybe it could operate for something like that too. So it's out of the elements, so.
Wasn't my idea.
Good thought.
Any other council discussion? Do we have any public comment on this item? Starting here in the ca- in the chambers? As this, as for six point three, the budget? Okay, come on up to. Come on up to.
Again, Tamara Norris, uh last meeting, uh when Jewel's proposal was um. Put down or whatever the official term is, uh many of the council members suggested. Mental health care being brought up and paid for by the council or exploring into those possibilities, but I don't see any of that up there. So I'm wondering wh- what that process is of looking into that, the introduction of it, and how that would look moving forward.
I can answer that, because I believe I'm the one that brought that up, so um. We're gonna get American Rescue Plan Act money, we call it, you might have heard us say ARPA up here. And we're waiting for the guidelines on that, but it looks like one of the things in the guidelines will probably be. Um for counseling and mental health, so once we find out the guidelines of that, which should be soon, right, Alex? Yes, should be soon, that's the next step on that.
Awesome, thanks so much.
I have a comment too, that I'm wondering, and this is more of a council discussion, but you know.
Thank you, Tamara.
About that, so, yes, because with the ARPA, that is what you had suggested, that's what the account, the council agreed to. Uh moving forward, after the ARPA, is there um a council desire to want to do that kind of. Work within the community to a nonprofit or somebody else, I don't know, it doesn't matter to me, but you know, is that something that we feel like we could invest in? Future years, moving forward, so it's more of a long term versus a one time? Or save some of, I don't, save some of the ARPA money and then use that in the next two year, three years?
Think we have four years to spend it, correct?
So can that be like stretched out?
One set for two.
ARPA speci- specifically, yeah, through uh end of twenty twenty-four.
So maybe put a plan together that is for the next four years, and then, you know, when that third year comes up, make a plan for where it comes out of the general fund or. A partnership with a a grant, I don't know, but I wanna be very um careful with that, because it can be like, oh yeah, we did this. Once for like a couple of months, you know, and it's like, how can we um. Make it. I'm I'm really blanking on where it's like a, an annual funding versus just like a.
So, like, just to be transparent, I don't know all of the rules on like general fund spending and all of that. I don't think any of us know every detail to that, but I definitely think that that would need to be a conversation, once we make a decision.
Yeah, a couple of things, I don't think, you know, Mike can weigh in a little bit, I think you, I think, first of all, for ARPA, I think. Mental health uh is going to be something that's eligible, it needs to be able to to be tied to the pandemic a little bit though too, right, or some, so. Just can't, we can't limit it, right, it's gonna be, if you're gonna put money to that, it's gonna be open to all Kingsburg residents who seek that sort of care. And then I think we just wanna be careful about committing future, um you know. Future councils to, you know, certain commitments, it's just some, you know, something that you have to consider every single year, right, like like we do with the budget, so.
I think we need to consider what services are currently available also, so that we're not using city funds. To fund a project that's already funded by Fresno County Behavioral Health, so I think that there is a lot that is out there through the county, through the state currently. That maybe as a city, we can kind of just put it together in a package, so that it's easier for city residents to get to. And it doesn't really cost the city dollars necessarily, so they just have the services, everything that they need. Without us having to commit huge lump sums for extended amounts of time.
But that's a really good point too, because partnerships are important in in that piece, and so it might not be a dollar amount, but it could be a dollar amount and. Space provided, I mentioned that at the last meeting, so let's say there's an organization or nonprofit or a group who. Provides just mental health services, or I know what one specifically from the Fresno E O C that is for LGBTQ plus community, right? Um and so if there was a partnership with a group like that to use space, because a lot of the, like Fresno E O C, for example, because I I know. How they work, cause I actually talked with the director of the LGBTQ plus resource center after our last meeting, and she mentioned that. You know, they can come into the city, but they don't have a grant for the city, right, so that's something they have to do on their end. And in the future, they're gonna be working towards getting into every city in Fresno County, but as of right now, can we provide a space or. I mean, I don't know the specifics, but like partnering in that way, so that, yes, it's a service that's already made available, maybe we don't have to put all the money up. But we can bring them into this town, so they don't have to direct to Fresno, right, is that kinda what you mean?
I I think as long as it's open to every.
Everybody, yeah.
Because, you know, that that is a specific faction of the community, whereas mental health impacts everyone, so I would hate to limit it to a smaller.
So for ARPA funds?
No, no, not just, not just for ARPA funds, but for all of it, if we're having a mental health discussion, for everything, I like the idea, but I like it being. Not just narrowed down, you know what I mean?
Right, but there are support for for that specific, and that's kind of what we committed to, I understand that the ARPA is specifically towards covid. Related things, so that makes sense, that one we have to say it is only mental health, but we're, I'm only here for two more years, you know, unless. But I'm just saying, in these two years that we're here, you know. You can support just a focused group, I mean, we didn't do the other thing, so we can do this thing. But if we're using ARPA funding, I understand that's everybody, but if in the future, we're not using ARPA funding, we can do it specifically for a queer group, does that make sense?
I understand, I understand.
An idea? Because what I'm hearing is like. Because what I'm hearing is like making people aware of the services that we do have in the community, because it's almost like there's no one, that we're aware of, one place that houses all that information, like I'm struggling in this, where can I get help? So I know that on our city website, we have like youth sports, you drop down and then it has all of those things listed. I don't know if that's something that maybe we could do, where it was a mental health, like, for the, the mental health of our community, where there were dropdowns and links, um, to things that are already avail- available, I know through the schools, we have something called All for Youth. We have social workers that are coming into our schools, they will take as many referrals as we put through at the parent's request. Um, maybe parents don't all know that, you know, they work with families and, um, that's something that is bet- provided by Fresno County. And so maybe just like on our website, as a start, you know, before we find out all the guidelines, maybe researching it and putting those all in one place, so that our citizens that, that need that help know like, I can go to this button and find what I need, just an idea.
Great idea, because, um, yeah, it can cover so many things, and there's so many resources out there for all sorts of kinds of people. Um, whether that be a link to how to apply for medical to be able to get therapy, I mean, with our health insurance, so this goes on and on, and so, um, having that on our website would be great, promoting that would be.
Yeah, I think it could be as, as simple as just putting a link to the county's behavioral health. Then their page is filled with suicide prevention lines, uh, ways to get help, all that stuff. I know that a lot of those are twenty-four hour lines, and there's peer groups that are on there too. So I think that even just a link to that.
The school districts both have, have them too on their websites?
A link to the county.
No, they have links to all kinds of resources.
Yeah, maybe if we can just create a hub.
Just like as a starting point, you know?
Definitely.
I'd be happy to help with, with researching on that, you too?
Yeah, we'll do it together, sounds good.
I don't know how to put it on the website, but I can get the information.
Did that answer part of your question? Tamara?
Honestly, it sounds, uh, very much like the council is avoiding helping the LGBT specifically, even though that was the, that was the, it sounds like it, everything is very much geared towards the community at large. When last meeting, very specific requests were made for the injured and the bullied and the underrepresented of your community. And instead of addressing those concerns, you're addressing everything as, um, as a vast majority, and we're, we're asking for very specific representation. Not that doesn't, not that everybody doesn't need it for some kind, that would be great, but it really sounds like you're, you're saying and you are suggesting, um, we don't want to have something specifically focused in Kingsburg, but we certainly can refer somebody to Fresno. Which in one account might be fine and dandy, but what about for the students that can't get there? What, so we're gonna give them a, a, a phone number to Fresno if they can't get there? How is that gonna be helpful for them? How, how, how are you representing all of the constituents that were here last meeting and the ones that couldn't come? That's what we were asking for specifically, and while a, a link on a website is gonna be great and it will be helpful for everybody. You had a significant amount of people that were asking for help and assistance from you, your constituents. And, and you are playing word games and dancing around specifically helping them. So no, it actually doesn't sound like you're addressing the situation, it sounds like you're sidestepping and dancing around it still.
So the ARPA money is what we were talking about for specifically here in Kingsburg?
But that sounds like it's being allocated for COVID, which is not specifically LGBT, right?
It could, it could be under that umbrella.
Sure, that's a very large umbrella, but that's not what was suggested last meeting, or that was not what was inferred last meeting. When the community asked to have representation in a public space, you all said no. But maybe we can do these things for that part of the community. But now you're not addressing.
Can't do that, because what about the kids getting bullied because he's too short, he's too tall, he's got a crooked ear, whatever the reason may be, so it has to be for any of those youth that are being bullied or, um, you know, made fun of or whatever this situation may be. That's what I agreed to, that's what I was agreeing to.
How about you do both?
Huh?
How come you can't do both? How come you can't have general information for everybody, the community at large?
Certain, I mean, that, that's, I don't know.
Well, I was talking with, uh, with Michael the other day, um, last Friday, and coming out of last, our last long council meeting, um, we aren't able to have a dialogue a lot back and forth. And so we had a, I felt like we had a really good conversation, and I know that it was a lot that one night that we did here, we had a lot of letters and it was busy, and that is our job, that we are elected here. But in reflecting on the hurts and the needs that I heard, like reflecting on it the week after, it was almost entirely youth. That's what I was hearing, it was youth that were the ones that were hurting. And I know, we talked about my previous job. Um, I know being in the junior high age, that is where I have seen a lot of things come up, that I know students need mental health services, and honestly, it's a struggle right now to find them anywhere, like waiting lists sometimes are a year long. We heard that la- uh, two weeks ago. But at that point, I think maybe some kids were questioning or like not quite sure what, like the depths of their hurt or their wanting to hurt themselves, what that was. And maybe as they were older in high school, they realized that it was because that they were, um, LGBTQ plus in that community. Where in junior high, like, I could see where like limiting that would take away from, I see your point, I absolutely see your point. But limiting it, especially even at that age, when our youth or our children, they're not quite sure, like even what's wrong, they know something's wrong, you know?
Oh, in, in my question about why not do both?
Mm-hmm.
And your, your question about why specify, why divide? Because it's pretty apparent that none of you, in making a doctor's appointment, have had to ask the doctor if they are LGBT friendly. Because I can tell you with my own experience, that there is nothing worse than walking into a doctor for nothing more than medical assistance for an injury and having your doctor not want to serve you because you are LGBT and having to pick up your child and leave. That's why. So including both ensures the safety. I'm not saying limited, but include both, it's necessary. If you're actually looking at doing this for the health and the safety and the benefit of this part of your community, you have to be willing to address it with the thought of what their actual needs are, not what your assumption of their needs are. Because their needs are different. And just because they're not yours, doesn't mean that they're not theirs. And you need to think about that and consider those things as well.
So mental health providers that are LGBTQ plus friendly, that's what you're saying? Yep, I agree with that. If we're gonna provide for the whole, we need to make sure that the providers are there for anyone in our community and, and meet them where they're at, I guess you would say?
That's, that's the, oh, I'm sorry, Michael Brewer, resident, um, regarding the mental health, which I'm totally with you on non-specifying, but through providing it through either right now ARPA, which has got to be done for everybody, um, and I would highly encourage considering something the city can do, if it's for all residents, um, be it maybe study on how many, um, police responses are to mental health, um, situations here in the town, which is local, and you guys can adjust the budget to that. Um, but specifically when you put in, uh, money like for All for Youth, um, my, uh, grandson was able to ask for a gender spec- uh, someone with gender specialty training, which is very, very difficult to obtain in the valley because of his conservative nature. So, um, like, a- and, and I do hear where you're coming from, but by providing it all and setting up standards that the providers that are going to pay, um, be willing to service the public as a whole, would mitigate that, that issue that I know you're concerned about. Because there have been litigation in court cases that are still going on about, I can't serve you because of your orientation and such. But from the city's aspect, what you're putting money into, you can say to this organization, okay, if you're not gonna see everybody, we don't need to, you can put yourselves elsewhere, so I'm, I'm.
So may, maybe you can educate me with that, because I obviously, I don't have that experience. If we had language in there that was specific to providers, being non-discriminatory, would that cover that? And then if they were brought up as discriminatory, that would maybe void a contract? Could we have some, some language in there, would that take care of something like that?
I cannot confirm what that kind of language would look like. I know that when provider, you have a provider list, um, just looking through insurance, for example.
You don't know?
They, I mean, you don't know, sometimes you do, but they put it out there specifically, they put, you know, um, gender reassignment or gender specification or LGBT, they will literally put LGBT friendly, sometimes, but not always.
And I think definitely.
What that language would be, I'm unaware.
I, I was just talking about if, if the language said something specific to where they have to be able to treat everyone without bias based on sexual orientation, if that language is included in there, gender, race, sexual orientation, the general state-related guidelines as far as what is discrimination, which would include the LGBTQ plus community, would that language specifically being in there be enough? Uh, I would have to have you guys educate me on that, because I don't know that experience.
I think it's a step in the right direction, yeah.
That's fair.
Because when you're a queer person or a non-binary person, or non-binary or trans, anything like that, and you walk into, I mean, I'm an example of this. And I had to make sure that my therapist understood my lifestyle and my partner and respected that, right? So that's a personal thing that I bring to the table to kind of bring some perspective, because, you know, I know people have seen other therapists that are like, your girlfriend's a she, and it's like, no, my partner is non-binary. You know what I mean? And so that in itself is more traumatizing, like you're at the therapist, you're, you think you're gonna get what you need to get, and it's worse. So I think that is kind of that point of like, you don't want to step into, not only the doctor's office and work and everywhere else, but into this mental health safe space and then constantly be misgendered yourself or just.
More confused than when you walked in.
More confusing than when you walked in, and it's, or traumatized than when you walked in, because you walked in with the bullying and the this and that, it's, it's, I, I, um, I didn't think, I didn't, I mean, of course I thought about that, but I think that once you hear it back, um, it helps the direction here, you made a little bit more clear of what that looks like. Because if it does have to be offered for everybody, because that's, that is what you guys agreed to at the last meeting. You didn't say it was gonna come out of the general fund or out of some other, you said ARPA, you did say that. So, you know, if that has to be done for everybody, then I mean, trying to find a way to make sure that those spaces are safe.
Yeah, I think those spaces need to be safe, like we talked about for, for everyone, you know, including that community. I, I don't want to, I don't want to provide funding or money for anyone who is gonna be prejudiced in any way, because that's not the point. The point is to get them the help, so I think including that language, hopefully.
Has All for, sorry to interrupt you, has All for Youth been good for, for your child?
Yes, All for Youth has actually been very well, they've been a valid gender specialty, um, provider. I kind of had a heads up on it because one of my closest friends is well into her career, they, they're a psychologist with gender specialties. So I, I knew what they asked for, um, so I think what it feels like is some of the confusion, because there is a lot of resources that are available through the county, through the state, um, making that information available in the community, kind of going for the town resident, we think of, especially the socioeconomic backgrounds of some individuals who can't stop in a car, who can't go off to Fresno, providing a small space like the schools do for the, um, counselors that, that just rotate every, you know, once every couple of weeks.
They send us many as we need, like they'll spend one day a week there if they have, whatever referrals they have, they'll, they'll send that many people.
All for Youth is a, a great opportunity.
What is All for Youth?
All for Youth is a Fresno County, uh, probar, which provides mental health services for students within the county. And it can be for any reason whatsoever. Unfortunately, my kids are related to me, so they're gonna have a lot of mental health issues. Um, we will definitely make sure that the taxes we put into, you know, that get used.
And those services are free for anybody?
That is for, for the students that are going to the school, yes, you're not, um, charged, the parents aren't charged, they'll run your, um, they'll ask for your insurance information.
But if you don't have any, they still take you?
Yeah, they'll, they'll take care of it.
If you don't have insurance, totally covered, um, Medi-Cal covers all of it. When you have insurance, sometimes it is a little trickier, but they work until they find a solution. And they're social workers, they're social workers that come out and, um, they have their own private space and they work through all kinds of things. Parent, teacher, anyone can fill out the paperwork. And, I mean, it's trauma, any sort of trauma, any sort of, even like behavior needs. If a parent needs some help with parenting, um, it's, it's a great program, it started the year before the pandemic hit, and so this last year, unfortunately, a lot of it was on Zoom, but they're back on campuses now.
And these, this, um, All for Youth, they're at all of our school, including the high school?
Yes.
So, okay, okay, that's, because I knew that they were having some social workers come, but I didn't know what that looked like, is, I mean, that could be a possible partnership, it's just the school and the city, if there's a, a need for more social workers at the high school specifically.
As many referrals as they get is how many they send, so. Um, I do have a question, because I know that we could talk about this for a long time, but we're talking about the budget. On ARPA, we're gonna have workshops, correct? With the public? That would be a really great thing to come to, and then kind of help design and think through, I mean, this will be one part of a two-point-two million dollar budget, but that would be a really good thing to pay attention to, um, on the dates of the workshops, so we could talk through more of, of these things? What do you think? Any more council discussion? Any public, um, on the phone that wants to make a comment? Anyone on the phone? Okay, then we'll close public comment, bring it back to council.
One more question. I promise it's the last one. Because we're showing the budget, right?
Yeah, we are.
Yes, we're showing the budget. So when we were talking right now, I was like, what are we talking about? Well, we were talking right now about police response to, um, really anybody's needs for mental health as far, maybe somebody is feeling that they're gonna harm themselves and they call the police or... I think in those instances, especially when there is self-harm and just a lot of trauma in that moment for that individual, a police response is not the best. That's my personal opinion. But the reason I bring it up is because I did a ride along with the police department. I've only done one. And I know we talked about there being social workers who sometimes will accompany them. Are there social workers? I don't, I really don't know if this is something that is already happening, but are there social workers that can respond to those kinds of calls countywide? Or, my question is, I want, I would love to see that in Kingsburg, um, more. Because they said there's only one or two, or three maybe, that they can bring with them every now and then. Right? So it's like, maybe they can't go to all of them, but you know, two out of 10, they can come. And I just think when somebody is in that position, and I know this, not from personal experience, but I know this from experience of people in my life, calling the cops sometimes make it, makes it worse. In that specific instance, which is a mental health call. Um, I guess my question is, is there a way for us to incorporate social workers to kind of answer those calls in our city? Or a partnership that we can create?
I know they do with the schools.
I, I can respond to part of that if you'd like.
I know.
Yeah. So there are specifically designated and trained mental health units to do that. Um, I know that some of those-
Within the department or from the county?
So those are all through the county. Now, those are assigned to rural areas by region. There's obviously not enough calls in the city of Kingsburg to employ a social worker. Now, that is a partnership that has to be done with the police because I understand what you're saying about not all of those calls for service seem to be a police action call. But regardless, we still have, as, they still have as a police department, the obligation to make that safe enough for that social worker to have contact.
Right.
Because, so when you call the police, you're going to hit the police. And that is something that the police department's gonna have to do to make that safe for those social workers. And they do have that as a facet. Um, I know that one of the things that our police department trains on specifically is just what you're talking about. De-escalation and making sure that mental health calls are treated like a mental health call and determining that. So a lot of times what they do is they will make it safe, then they will call for a mental health unit specifically to come. That is that person who is that non-threatening law enforcement presence that can just come and work out those issues. Um, you know, they may be placed on a hold and taken to the hospital depending on their actions and what they need at that time. But sometimes it's just a matter of getting resources and stuff. And those are all done through the county behavioral health. Um, and they are assigned to different regional areas and they'll work out of different police departments depending on the days of the week. Um, I know that they make contact with officers. They do come ride with them. Um, so I think that is the steps in the right direction towards that. I, I don't know that there's gonna be enough of these mental health calls to justify a full-time social worker with the police department because you're talking about having a staff, three shifts, seven days a week in order to make that happen. Um, whereas I just don't know-
I just think it's an effort in, I mean, it might not happen here a lot. But I think that we have seen our fair share of disabled people who are killed because, um, they can't properly sometime, not even just disabled people, but just people in general who are in this moment of trauma or maybe they're just being themselves and, you know what I mean? And it's, you're being approached by a police officer versus a non-threatening person. Is there a way that, I mean, this is another conversation for another day, but is there a way that social worker can be provided with that same training in order to, and it's not threatening? I don't know. But like I said, another question for another day. But just in general, trying to get creative about how we can meet that need because the last thing I wanna see is, um, you know, or hear is that, um, you know, somebody just, it made it worse for them. I don't know how to say that.
Yeah, I get it. And I think that, I think that overall law enforcement, especially given the last two years, is doing a lot more training with that. I know our PD specifically is doing that. It's de-escalation stuff. It's really assessing. And that also takes place before it even gets to the officers, the dispatch center downtown. Um, they have a different way that they triage mental health calls to determine if law enforcement's needed for that too. So I think it's going in that direction.
Yeah, and I think that with the opportunity that we have, thankfully, since, um, those things can be intersected, right? Like a mental health worker, social worker and the police department. I think in our community, we have a really supportive, um, base for public safety. I mean, we have Measure E. And so if the question is how are we gonna pay for it, um, I think there's room to be able to make, maybe it's not full-time, but we can start, like I said, getting creative with what that might look like. And if it's not this year, it could be the next or the next, but it's just starting to reimagine what public safety looks like for people.
When we lost a few students, um, I don't know how many years it's been, uh, maybe four or five years ago. There was a change, um, that did occur. And I only saw the school side of it, um, when I would have to make some of those calls. Um, I don't know about the calls when it's to a home, you know? But there was always a social worker. Um, I can't think of the name of the facility they would come from. But there was like a threat assessment, of course, we do that. Then the officer would do one. And then calmly talk with the person. Um, and then when the social worker came, they took over and they followed up. There was a plan. They followed up. They'd go play video games at houses like they would. I don't know outside of the schools how that is, but can see, makes a difference.
Starting somewhere.
I've seen it locally with police.
Hmm?
I've seen it locally with police officers actually, uh, shortly and randomly here. Um, there will be child, uh, without being specific, ran away from home. I think at my doorstep because they were afraid of my kids. Um, of course, I have a minor at my house that I do recognize, didn't know the names, one of the things. So I called up the police, I kind of gave them a heads up. I have one officer that arrived on scene. I didn't have like five dozen officers show up. He and I talked before I let him into the house to ensure he was safe. Because I've done triage, I've done that kind of combat zone mindset. Um, the officer was great. He handled the child well. Got the kid back to their home safely. My wife and I followed up by going over and introducing ourselves to their guardian. And now that individual's welcoming over to my house. But I was very impressed with the police officer in that he didn't come over, tried to just take over the situation. He was very calm. We had that de-escalating, most of that equipment actually been managed. Um, at least in the experience I've had with your local law enforcement.
And I know that she does a really good job. I don't even have money on me, but there. She does a really good job with, and I've seen it, so it's impressive, but...
There's nothing else?
Nothing else?
Julie, you have anything?
I'm, I'm done. I keep making these things up because I'm sorry.
Okay, item, we're gonna move, that was informational only. We're gonna move on to item seven. Seven point one, um, Community Services Commission. Our last meeting was canceled. And so we'll meet next month. Um, seven point two, Public Safety Committee.
We will not meet again until, I believe, August.
Seven point three, Chamber.
Nothing to report.
Seven point four, Economic Development.
EDC hasn't met.
Seven point five, Finance Committee.
I've not met. We're getting through some budget stuff.
So-
We just took an hour of that meeting.
Seven point six, Planning Commission, we haven't met. Seven point seven, SKGSA.
I didn't say it that way. Um, I wrote it down here somewhere. Um, we're meeting next Wednesday. So I'll have to report the next.
Um, seven point eight, BID.
Oh, that's also me. Uh, we are meeting tomorrow, right here at eight AM.
Seven point nine, um, Council of Governments. Um, Council Member Roman is not here tonight, and so I will report on her behalf. Um, it's about Highway ninety-nine. So right now, um, we have on northbound Sierra, um, on-ramp closed and the Bethel off-ramp closed. Um, as well as a lot of construction still going on on the freeway. Um, the reasoning, given that the date is pushed out farther is because of COVID restrictions and those are supposed to lift on June fifteenth. So the estimation of when that will be completed, at least our section, is the second half of July. And that's it. Council member reports, seven point ten.
Just trying to recover after our last meeting. Um, I did do that ride along though, so that was a lot of fun. So I've covered shifts B and C, and then I gotta get to shift A. And then we're gonna hire six more people or five more people, so then I gotta do it again. But, um, that's all I got.
Seven point eleven, City Managers Report.
Um, two items, just a reminder about the KYBA, um, opening next Monday night, the seventh, at seven PM that, uh, you're all invited to for the, the new field.
Is it Monday?
Yeah, next Monday.
And then, um, we, uh, held a call today. Dave and I were on the call with the Union Pacific Railroad. We've talked a little bit about the, uh, lengthy blockages that we've had. Um, they indicated to us that they have made some changes, uh, in their routing and their scheduling uh, with regards to lengths of trains. So we're hopeful that that will assist, uh, us with that. Um, they're, they have two, uh, major, um, customers in the Kingsburg area. Um, the north, it's California Sheets, which is at the old Del Monte plant, and south is Foster Farms. And, um, um, so they're, they're, uh, aware of our issues and our concerns. And so we're, we'll continue to monitor that, but I just wanted to give you an idea of those conversations. That's all I have.
Item eight, we have no future agenda items listed. Item nine, we are going to adjourn our regular Kingsburg City Council meeting.
Close for eleven o'clock. Yes, exactly. My fiance was already on makeup on, but I was, I was doing my makeup in the mirror.
Are we having the fireworks show this year?
Yeah.
Uh-huh, we already have.